The Lemonster City Council meeting is funded in part by DeCarulous Insurance Agency at
This is a public hearing before the City Council for the City of Lemonster. Petition 10-22 Revolutionary Clinics II, Inc. Seeks a special permit from the Lemonster City Council to operate a recreational marijuana establishment use at 130 Pioneer Drive in Lemonster in accordance with zoning ordinance, Chapter 22, Article 18, Marijuana Facilities, Section 22-105. Is the applicant present?
We are.
Okay. Gentlemen, want to come in?
Thank you.
I think most of us know you guys, but if you could just introduce yourselves for the, for the record.
My name is Kyle Burchard. I work with Goldsmith, Preston, Ringwall, and AR Massachusetts as the civil engineer.
I'm Keith Cooper, CEO of the company.
Ryan Anson, co-founder of the company.
Okay. Why don't, why don't you guys, gentlemen, start by just giving us a brief, brief overview of what you're planning?
Yeah, thank you very much. Thank you for the opportunity. Thank you for inviting us here, including us here tonight. So Ryan Anson, I grew up here in Lemonster and Moonenburg, spending time here, and my career really started here, almost in the basement, maybe one floor up, at the first Boys and Girls Club of North Central Massachusetts meeting where I was on the board 20 some years ago. So, real pleasure to be back, real pleasure to see so many familiar faces. I started REV about five years ago with a few partners. From my perspective, and we each all had our main goals, core goals for the company, but was to create careers here through the cannabis industry, not just jobs. Hopefully, then, was hundreds of jobs, and the aim was really careers. And that's what I've been most proud of in the last few years, has been creating close to 400 positions within the company, many of which have been in North Central Massachusetts, many Lemonster residents. And originally back then, Fitchburg and Lemonster weren't so keen on dispensing, they were really keen on the job creation from cultivation. And as time has gone on and legalization has felt more and more normal here in Massachusetts, it seemed like there was an opening to have a facility for a dispensary nearby as well to continue that charge of creating great careers. So, really excited to do so, really excited that the cannabis industry locally and nationally continues to professionalize. Excited to be here in Lemonster with this prospect, and excited to introduce you to my partner, the CEO, Keith Cooper.
Thank you, Ryan. Thank you very much, Council, for having us. I'm Keith Cooper, CEO of Revolutionary Clinics. I've been with the company for four and a half years now. This is my eighth growth stage or startup company. I'm very proud to have created several thousand jobs in Massachusetts over the last 35 years, longer than your life, Ryan.
All right.
And, and I, I met Ryan after I had sold one of my last companies, and he convinced me that this was a terrific opportunity, and, and he was right. Having an industry that's been around for hundreds of years be legalized, regulated, taxed, and tested is, is a very good idea, we believe, and is spreading across the country as you've seen. We're proud to have been in the business now for about four years in operations. Licensing was before that. We have three locations for retail now, in Somerville and in Cambridge. We have our factory, as Ryan mentioned, in Fitchburg. In Fitchburg, we have about 250 employees, where when I started four years ago, we had five. So, nice, nice growth there. It's nice to see the parking lot full at 1 Oak Hill Road. We believe that this is an excellent opportunity for both Lemonster and for Revolutionary. We currently serve over 150,000 Massachusetts customers per year. We're one of the larger organizations in the state that have been doing this for the longest period of time. We're proud to have a very diverse workforce at retail. We have over 70% female and minority representation there. We're trying to do better in Fitchburg, not quite that good in Fitchburg, but, but working on that with our D E and I specialists. And we, in Fitchburg, we do not just cultivation, we also do research and development, we do production of edibles and concentrates and processing as well. And obviously, this is a highly regulated industry. We have security at all of our locations 24/7. We've had no issues with that at retail or in our factory in the last three and a half years. The Lemonster economic opportunity obviously comes from both the 3% host community fee, it comes from the 3% sales tax, and we anticipate we'll do about $700,000 a month in revenue, so somewhere between $400,000 and $500,000 a year in those two categories, ignoring property taxes, but not ignoring at all the job creation that we anticipate at the site. We think we'll have about 25 full-time jobs. We provide benefits that are substantial in our industry. We pay more than the industry average at over $19 an hour to start. And as Ryan said, we have employees that have been with us since the very beginning. We like them to believe this is a place they can have a career, not just a job. So, we're, we're excited about that for, for Lemonster. We think 130 Pioneer Drive is, is a good location. Residents voted for adult-use cannabis, obviously, in this community, and the city remains below the 20% threshold of the liquor store to set up these retail stores. And the City Council, as we read, has articulated its appreciation for local businesses managed by operators who care. I will tell you, this gentleman to my right cares a lot about this community, which I didn't know much about until I joined this company. In addition, this location is in a off-the-beaten-path place, so very little congestion will be created. We have an eco-friendly modular build that Kyle can talk more about, within an industrial zone abutting proximate retail, so it's a good location by way of traffic passing, but it's also a good location because it's not in the way of other businesses or residences that might be concerned with traffic. All of the lines, if any, would happen inside the store, not outside the store, and we have 40 parking spaces, so plenty at this stage of the game. Many of you probably read, two and a half years ago, the first stores that opened got a lot of attention, a lot of business. It's, it's not really that way anymore. I wish we were first, but we're not. But, but it's, it's a good location in an industrial zone for this type of use. Obviously, no onsite consumption. We have no plans to ever ask for that by way of a consumption lounge or anything like that. There's no loitering. We do a good job of the communities in which we serve. So with that, I'll turn it over to Kyle to discuss the property and any, answer any questions about the building site.
Sure. Thank you, Keith. So, as the site civil engineer, we were asked to look at the site from a development standpoint for the special permit that we are requesting from the Council this evening. There are specific outlines of, and sections of 22-105 to comply and demonstrate compliance in addition to the rest of the community involvement that the company represents. So, we have been to the planning board to get approval from a site planning standpoint. We've gotten a stormwater permit approved by the DPW, and we have been to the CONCOM for a request for determination of applicability, and we received a negative-three determination because we're not causing any environmental detriment to any resource areas. So, some of the parts of the special permit compliance, I'm sure that the Council is familiar with, it is in our submitted packet. Briefly, if I may, we just run through some of that. Keith also touched upon some of those items. The hours of operation would stem 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. as a general outline for that. They may refine that, but it would certainly be within that envelope, seven days a week. As Keith mentioned, there's no consumption on the premises. There will be signage, but as a registered marijuana establishment, it's not the same as in Section 105.56, which talks about medical dispensaries. Slight difference, change in the ordinance as it took place, as it converted in 2018 to include the recreational uses. We are in your packets, I don't know if you've received a packet that was submitted from Exhibit A. There are several maps and drawings that we can't project, but I'll just reference some of them as to what they depict. Very important, we are at least 500 feet away from any residential zones or churches, and also greater than 1,000 feet from schools and childcare or family care facilities, parks, playgrounds, or other marijuana facilities, as this would be the first one in the city. The, the special permit requirements, as Keith also mentioned, is less than 20% of the package stores. We have that as well. We included in the package all of the licenses, the deeds, leases, all the disclosures, list of abutters, and a security plan for the facility, which is standard with every facility that has come under Revolutionary. So, in this evening, we recognize there are certain mandatory findings by the Council that it would have no impact, visual or economic, that it's compliant with Massachusetts state law, and that we're compliant with the sections of the special permit ordinance. There will be annual reporting that's required by January 31st of each year that makes sure that licenses are current and the ownership is stated again if it's changed. And there is a removal bond, which needs to be posted, I believe, has already been done, and that we understand this, this special permit, if it were the Council's will to grant it, would expire within a year, if not exercised, and that it would have to be completely decommissioned upon, you know, the closure of the dispensary if that were to occur. So, what I can tell you about the site is that it's an existing denuded site that has, it's been a gravel contractor yard for some years. It will continue to function that way with the owner still using the rear portion of the facility. We have provided for a one-way vehicular circulation onto and off of the property, which also accommodates the landowner's usage of his portion of the lot that he'll essentially lease back to continue to use on the property for his business. The stormwater compliance, as I mentioned, has been approved by the DPW, the planning board has, has approved, and we have plans that have been submitted to the building department. The building is a one-story building, and it's got kind of an interesting roof line, kind of a V shape, the modular eco-friendly building Keith had mentioned. So, there will be the 40 parking spaces, a fair amount of landscaping, as well as the irrigation to support that landscaping for various screening, and have full complement of lighting in the parking areas to make sure that we've accommodated the safety of anyone who might be visiting there in nighttime hours. There was a parking study that was done, reviewed and approved by the planning board as well, that indicates that the traffic that comes in is really not much compared to the baseline traffic that's already going through this industrial area. And that's essentially it. The site is fairly well situated, off the beaten path, but it has pretty easy access to Route 2, and should fit well within this community. Again, because it's in the industrial zone, we're requesting a special permit, and we thank the Council for so, and happy to answer any questions.
Okay. I, I thought the materials submitted were very good and addressed all the requirements of the special permit. So, I don't have any questions. I will go to my committee.
Counsel shall, I think it's abstained.
Abstained. So, I will go to the third member, Counsel Cormier, if he has any questions at this time.
Yes, thank you very much. So far, good presentation, a lot of detail in all documents that were submitted. I just have one question. 105.6.8, you kind of touched upon this, and I was looking at this earlier about a bond, a demolition bond. So, you, one has been posted.
Correct.
How much is that for, and is there evidence of that on file with the city?
Yeah, so, it's a $50,000 bond that was negotiated with the landowner. I believe the city's experience, as well as many other cities, has been that people make big claims and have big wishes and great intentions, and sound intentions, but then things change. And we have undergone this process to go through it with integrity, but also pace. And so, we offered that landowner, very kind partner in this process, a $50,000 removal bond, and we're building it out in a modular fashion off-site so that we can fit within that one-year window. One year sounds like a lot of time until you start making plans and construction, and all of a sudden, that, that time evaporates. So, yeah, the, the landowner's concerns were satisfied with that bond, as well as the city's. And because of the type of construction, all that would need to happen with that $50,000 would be demolition of a pretty small slab, and then whatever needed to happen on the waste, on the water.
Okay. All right. I mean, I, you know, obviously, you know, our biggest concern is that you, you know, number one, you, you qualify for, you know, under all the zoning. That's what I look at. You know, obviously, this is a very highly regulated industry, so, you know, we have very little to say about that, you know, in terms of, from this, you know, from this I guess I would just ask, I've visited a, a facility out in Salem, Mass., and I've also been to the Gardner facility as well. And obviously, when you show up at the facility, you have to show identification. You go in one door, shut behind you, there's a barrier between you and the facility, so you're in, kind of in a room, and there's a barrier between, another closed door before you go into the facility. Is that how your facility is usually set up, so that nobody can kind of piggyback in and stuff like that, and kind of force their way in to the facility? If you can talk about your, your operation in that regard and your security plan, you know, just how secure the facility is?
Sure, happy to. We do have a vestibule, so one person comes in at a time. They show their ID outside to security, and then they show it again when they come into the vestibule, so it's double-checked. It's logged into the system, and then they're allowed into the store. Then the next person can come in after that. We have full-time security unarmed, and in a, in a uniform that you can identify as security, but not in a police officer's uniform, just for, you know, customer service, frankly. And inside the store, as you may have seen, because you've visited one or two, there are cameras everywhere. There's access control to all of the doors, both to get behind the POS station, as well as obviously to get to where the product is in the vault. The vault is double-built and secured and alarmed and so forth. It's higher security than a bank, is the way it's described. Lantel Communications, which does an awful lot of security for not just the casinos in Massachusetts, but also for law enforcement in Massachusetts, is our vendor and our partner and has been for the last four years.
It's also a part of the Massachusetts regulations that you're not allowed to have product just out on the shelves, as you'd take candy off of a rack. This is a standard fulfillment process that all comes out from the vault, so you don't have customers moseying around, taking things, and creating an opportunity for slippage.
Yeah, I might also state that POS, I don't know, point-of-sale, is that's what it stands, I believe there are nine of the point-of-sale stations, and so, when you, after you go through the secure vestibule, you're inside in a space, and then there's a counter with the point-of-sale stations. So, the line is formed, and, and I think, you know, gated, not gated, but there's a, I forget what you call them. The roping, you know, so that the line would form in a, in a sequential fashion.
And I, you know, I know that the chairman is going to read these into the record, but obviously, our police chief, you know, has went over this with you, a security plan, and he's comfortable with it.
Yes, as part of the planning board process, we submitted the security plan, and it was reviewed by the police department, and they had no comment.
Perfect. No, other than that, Mr. Chairman, I'm all set for now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel Cormier. Does any other member of the City Council have any questions or comments? Counselor Pauline Cormier.
Thank you for your presentation. Just a couple of questions. I know you talked about doing some modulators off-site. Do you expect that you're going to be up and running? Are you going to hit the one-year mark?
From today?
If, if and when you're...
We're estimating April 1st. In construction terms, I would call that May 1st, but I, I don't anticipate that we would push beyond, much beyond that time.
And that's a, opening the doors?
Yeah, this, this is a relatively small 22, 2300 square foot facility. These types of modular units are, are created routinely with the company that, that we've engaged with in the off-site construction. And so, the anomalies for them are additional security, making sure that we're working preemptively with our vendors for the, the desk units and things like that, which are a little bit more specific to the cannabis industry. But, we, we fully intend, both for our revenue sake, as well as the tax revenue that we've described for you, that this is happening quickly.
Okay. And my other question is, security, 24/7?
Yes.
24/7.
And is, is someone physically there?
No, ma'am. The security personnel are only there during operating hours. Other than that, it's a monitoring system and alarm system.
Okay. And is that a direct link to the police department?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other counselor have any questions or comments? Counsel Hardinger, and then I'll go to Counsel Angelini.
Just a quick question about the bond. You said the bond is for $50,000, and it's only to remove the slab?
Yeah, the buildings will be removable, period. That's part of the modular system. And so, as someone who's investing, as a company that's investing this level of capital, if we needed to move this somewhere else for any reason, there is value to be found in those buildings. And so, the bond is to, is to make sure that the land goes back as the land situated today.
Is that stipulated in the bond agreement, that you'll have the building removed?
Yeah, at the owner's, at the owner's expense, at our expense.
George Spence, okay. Thank you.
Counselor Angelini.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be brief. I just, from my perspective, I know that you gentlemen have jumped through all the hoops, all the regulatory hoops to get to this point. What's also important to me as a counselor is the integrity of the applicants. And I can say with a great deal of surety, I know Mr. Ranson's granddad, I know his father, and the family certainly has an impeccable reputation in the Massachusetts area and beyond. So, with Mr. Ranson being part of this company, it certainly makes me much more comfortable. And if the Council does grant the permit this evening, I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Any other counselor have any questions?
Tom Hallseth.
Okay. Before I go to the public, I do have some referrals from various department heads that I do need to read into the record. We have a letter dated October 4th, 2021, from Aaron Kennedy, Chief of Police. The subject referral is the petitioner. "As of this time, comma, the Lemonster Police Department has no issues with this project going forward." However, I did speak with Kyle Burchard of Goldsmith, Priest and Ringwall, who is designing this project. We went over the traffic impact, parking, and handicap spots for this business. Also... Also, the cameras locations and alarm system for this site. "We are satisfied and welcome this business to the City of Leominster, and I can't wait for a tour as this project proceeds." Respectfully, Aaron F. Kennedy, Chief of Police. We also have a letter dated October 4th, 2021, from Peter Nile, the Building Commissioner. Again, this is in reference to this petition. "Members of the Legal Affairs Committee, I am receipt of an email communication dated September 28th, 2021, asking for my recommendation on petition 10-22 Revolutionary Clinics II, Inc. seeks a special permit from the Leominster City Council to operate a recreational marijuana establishment use at 130 Pioneer Drive in Leominster. I am in support of this as it meets the zoning requirements to operate this type of business. If you have any questions or need further information, please feel free to contact my office. Sincerely, Peter Nile." We were also provided with a copy of the lease agreement between the owner and the applicant. We have a letter dated October 12th, 2021, from the Mayor of the City of Leominster, Dean J. Mazzarella. "Dear members of the City Council, in response to communication 10-22 Revolutionary Clinics II, Inc. seeks a special permit from the Leominster City Council to operate a recreational marijuana establishment use at 130 Pioneer Drive in Leominster in accordance with zoning ordinance, Chapter 22, Article 18, Marijuana Facilities, Section 22-105. Please note that I am in favor of communication 10-22. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact my office anytime. Sincerely, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor." We also have a letter dated October 5th, 2021. This is from Elizabeth Wood, the Planning and Development Director. The Rayline is this petition. This is addressed to the city clerk. "Dear Caitlin, the Leominster Planning Board originally reviewed this referral at their October 4th, 21 meeting, and voted 6 to 0 to send a positive recommendation to City Council. RE City Council Petition 10-22 Revolutionary Clinics II, Inc. seeks a special permit from the Leominster City Council to operate a recreational marijuana establishment use at 130 Pioneer Drive in Leominster in accordance with zoning ordinance, Chapter 22, Article 18, Marijuana Facilities, Section 22-105. Background, on October 4th, 2021, the Planning Board voted 5 to 0 to 1 to approve the site plan application for 130 Pioneer Drive, Map 463, Parcel 13. Please do not hesitate to reach out if you have any questions. Regards, Elizabeth Wood, Planning and Development Director." Let's make sure, is anything I missed? Okay, so the petitioner has received positive referrals from all of the recommendations. At this time, unless anyone has any questions or comments, I'm going to go to the audience. Does any member of the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Second time, does any member of the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Third and final time, does any member of the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Seeing none, I'll go back to the legal affairs, Mr. President.
I'm sorry, if Council Quomier has a question, why don't you let him?
Okay, just go back to Council Quomier. All set?
The only question I have is, is there a host agreement?
Yes, that was the first step in this process.
Right, I don't think it's in our packet, and I noticed.
No, it's not in our packet.
We can certainly.
Could you recite the basic tenets of it for us?
The meat of any host agreement is the additional tax that is put on that, and the stated norm throughout the city, excuse me, throughout the state has been 3% host community fee, and that is what we've agreed to here in Leominster.
All right, so basically, it's going to match the sales tax provision.
That's correct.
Is there anything else in that agreement that you'd like to let us know about?
No, purposely, cities don't put other things in that agreement for legal reasons.
Right.
And so we, we as a company are as committed to this city and to this community as I am as a person, and we are as a family.
Right.
But no, that wouldn't make it into the host community agreement, because it would come under all kinds of legal stipulation and legal scrutiny that nobody would want. We're happy to already have committed to monthly donations to different organizations, and we'll continue to do that and increase, both in dollar amount, as well as what we intend to do with hours. So we pay for volunteer hours, and we've talked to these different organizations about operational efficiencies as well.
I know that was an early practice that's grown into disfavor over the last couple of years.
Stacking those favors in text, for sure. The reality is, this industry is not a, not a windfall panacea, like a lot of folks thought it was. It can be successful, and it can be a great source for careers and a great source for shared victory. But what ended up happening with different mayors seeing this as one of the only pockets to pick during uncomfortable times, was it put entrepreneurs in a really uncomfortable and unfair position against each other. And so that has come under legal scrutiny, and it makes sense to, from my perspective, within a community that I care about, for them to do or request the most that they can, and also not to overstep boundaries, and know that they're welcoming people and businesses in that have the best interests of the community.
I think that makes sense. I don't disagree with it. But could, could you file the host agreement with the city clerk at some point?
Absolutely. I'm shocked that it's not in your packets. I know that it's filed, because it starts with the, with the city.
I suspect that it was, but I just didn't see it in our packet.
Of course.
I appreciate you making the representation as to what's in there, and letting us know that it will be filed.
Of course.
All right, thank you. I'm all set.
Okay. Any other city councillor have any questions or comments? Mr. President, I'll just do some quick subcommittee work.
Sure.
From, from my perspective, the petitioner complies with the, with the ordinance, is entitled to the special permit. I would be recommending we approve the special permit. Council Quomier, just your position.
Yeah, I also agree. I believe they meet all the guidelines that we ask them for locally. It certainly would be, it certainly would be my position to, to grant the special permit. I'm just trying to jog in my mind if I'd want any stipulations on there. I don't think the police chief has asked for any. I'm trying to think, in the past, if we had some kind of a direct line to the police station or something like that, might have been requested in the past on another facility, but I don't know, I don't know if there's any, anything we want to put on there.
I think in the past, there was a, there was an issue of things they were going to do, so we made that a special condition.
Conditions of a special permit.
That's not present in this particular application.
Nothing's coming to my mind for any conditions either, so I'm.
I mean, there's standard special permit conditions, which I think is where you're going.
Correct.
Yeah. But there are, there are standard special permit conditions that go with every approval, but they're, they're essentially tied to zoning and what's in the, what's in the ordinance. Councilor Deans, I don't know if you.
I mean, really, it could be as simple as, you know, we make a finding that they, if, if in fact we're there, we make a finding that they've complied with all the requirements of the special permit ordinance, and that they continue their compliance with the ordinance.
Yep.
That's fine.
So at this point, our recommendation is to approve the special permit, and we would close the special, close the public hearing and take it up in the regular course.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Appreciate the hard work.
Thank you.
We'll get to it during our regular meeting. Okay, I think the next hearing is also legal affairs, correct?
Yep, yes, it is.
We have to start the meeting.
Oh. We're going to open the meeting.
Oh, that's right.
Before I take our official attendance tonight, there's a bit of heaviness on my mind. One, it's the 58th anniversary of the assassination of JFK, which is always something I note. Also, the events in Wisconsin are deeply troubling. But on a more local level, while we welcome enthusiastically our new councillor, Bill Brady, this evening, we are officially closing a chapter on Council Feckley. And I would just ask, before I take the official roll call, that we offer a moment of silence. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, taking their role, starting with Council Dombrowski.
Present.
Councilor Schalfo Zephyr.
Present.
Councilor Brady for the first time.
Present.
Council Angelini.
Present.
Council Ardinger.
Present.
Council Pauline Quomier.
Present.
Council David Quomier.
Present.
I shall be recorded as president. We have eight councils in attendance. Does the chairman of records have a report?
Yes, Mr. President, I reviewed the minutes for November 8th, I believe it was, for 2021, and find them to be in order and ask that they be placed on file.
Very well, that may be done. I'll now entertain a motion to go into recess. Councilor Schalfo Zephyr, do I have a second? Council Pauline Quomier. All those in favor of recess, please recognize the usual manner. We are in recess. And Councilor Dombrowski, back to you.
Okay, we have a second public hearing on petition 17-22. Elvis Velez of Viper Realty Corp. requests a flammable liquids license for 48,000 gallons of cooking oil Class 3B at 645 Lancaster Street. Good evening, gentlemen. You could just introduce yourselves for the record.
My name is Elvis Velez. I am the president of DJV Oyu Recycling.
Okay, and the gentleman with you?
I'm Carlos Jimenez. I'm the partner in the DJV.
Okay. Thank you. Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
I'm Bob Seppi, Fire Protection Engineer, here to help them with the presentation.
Okay. I would, just from the outset, I, I'm gonna just let you and everybody know, this is a, this is a new one, I think, for us. So there's a little bit of an education, and I think that the likelihood is we're going to end up having to continue this to a second public hearing. We have some referrals out to different department heads. We haven't got those back yet. And I understand that the Health Department has requested in writing answers to a slew of questions. I don't know if you gentlemen have gotten those.
We haven't received anything. I went to the Health Department, and they, the information that I've received from them is that they feel comfortable with, you know, what we're doing and what we have at this point.
Okay.
We haven't received anything from them.
All right. I think, just, just doing some administrative work, I wonder if it makes sense, Mr. President, well, if we, I usually like to do these things where you have one public hearing and a presentation, and because what happens, having been here for a long time, you guys are going to answer the same questions twice, if we have two public hearings. And you're going to say everything twice, so sometimes it makes sense to just get all the information together and do one cohesive public hearing where, where, you know, everybody's, all the information we need is presented at the same time. But, but I'm happy to continue this day, this way, but, Mr. President, I just asked for your thoughts on it.
Yeah, I agree with you. I mean, if the applicant wants to present, I mean, that's your right to do, but I think the chairman of legal affairs is correct. What's going to happen is we're just going to rehash all of this again, two weeks from now, whenever. So we're, we have referrals that are out, that we really can't proceed with until we get back from those departments.
Right, and then I'd like to arrange to get these questions to you from our, our Health Department, so that you can, you know, answer, rather than getting hit with them tonight, you can take the time and provide, you know, provide good answers. And I don't, I'll go to my committee also. Councilor Schalfo Zephyr, your feelings on this?
No, I agree with that, because the Health Director had a lot of specific questions, and then also the Fire Department did as well.
Right.
So I think it would be helpful to have, you know, you see those in writing, and then be able to respond to them at the next public hearing.
So what happens is, when a petition is filed with us, okay, we send it out to the department heads, who are the specialists. And in your case, the Health Department and the Fire Department are key, and they usually come back with a recommendation. We approve this, we don't approve this, or they're somewhere in the middle. In this case, they both came back with questions. So I think it'd be better, you know, for you and for us, if this, if this meeting tonight is continued, and when would the next meeting be, Ms. Clerk, if we did this?
December 13th at 6:50.
December 13th. Okay, so you're looking at like three weeks.
Could I speak?
Sure.
We met with the Fire Department several times.
Yeah.
I went to the building and evaluated the sprinkler system for the Fire Department, and they updated some of the sprinkle work, so they are compliant from the fire protection standpoint. You mentioned that you're not, this is the first time for this process, are you saying it's the first time they issue a license to store?
No, it's the first time with this particular type of, of operation. Where you're essentially taking cooking oil, and you're recycling it and using it for a different purpose. So we've, we've never, we've never had that particular type of industry, which, which it sounds like a great, sounds like a great thing, but it's something that's new to us.
Well, I am surprised the Fire Department hasn't given you something, because we also met with them later, maybe a month ago, three weeks ago.
Yes, yes.
And met with the chief and the Captain Jonathan Campania.
Yep.
And, you know, right now, he can operate with up to 10,000 gallons of product. And they, they went through the site, they saw the site, they see there's a very safe and clean operation. And they have no, no problem with the current operation, but they want to make sure everything is in line to go over that 10,000 gallons, and that obviously is why we have the request for a license to store the 48,000 that we're here today for.
I, I understand, I understand what you're saying. What I'm, what I'm saying is that information hasn't gotten to us in a formal capacity yet. So, but again, you know, it's up to you. The meeting is scheduled, it's advertised. So if you want to present tonight, it's, it's fine, or we can just, you know, start fresh on the 13th. Because we're going to have to, we're going to have to continue it anyway, so I'm.
I think it'd be good if you have any questions, to come out with them tonight, so in case we have to prepare something, we can be prepared for the next meeting. You have questions on the process, or questions on how it's stored. If we could explain that tonight, it may bring out other questions that we don't want to wait to the next meeting to have the questions and have to continue again, if that makes sense.
Mr. Chair, I have a few questions that I was going to ask that might help them prepare for the next meeting as well, so.
We, yeah, we can, we can certainly do it that way, that's fine.
Yeah.
Why don't you, why don't you go ahead?
Of course, this might be part of the presentation, which, you know, if you give it tonight, you know, I might have heard it anyway, or, but one of my questions, when you read this application, which is about as basic of an application as I've ever seen, is the storage above ground or below ground? How is it stored? How is it stored?
It's above ground, in the building.
Above ground, inside of a building, okay. And what hours of operation generally?
It is from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
Seven to six, okay. Okay, those were a few of my initial questions. I mean, I didn't even see that on the application, so I didn't know if we were talking about an above-ground storage tank, a below-ground storage tank, you know, and things like that. So at least I got some of those basic questions answered, but I'm sure that if you, when you give your presentation, you'll be talking more about, you know, containment and spills and all that. But first, I wanted to know what we're dealing with, above ground or below ground, so...
Basically, this process for this application is just a license for store on that piece of land. Really doesn't, shouldn't involve processes and so on, but we'll gladly give that to you. But the process the state is required is a license to store on a piece of property is for the land. It's not specifically for him, it's for the actual piece of land. So, and I think it breaks it out on the application, above ground, underground. I don't memorize those things, but...
No.
But it doesn't really matter either way, it's a license to store on the property. But I understand your concerns of above ground, underground, so on and so forth.
Right.
And we can get into that, I guess, at the next hearing. So this one thing, now I know what you're looking for, helps me for the next meeting.
Right.
So if anybody else has any questions similar to that, I'd love to hear them now, so we can prepare better.
You know, my type of question would be if there's a leak, you know, does this, it doesn't sound, you know, some of these materials we've dealt with and approved licenses for, you know, if there's a leak, they just dissipate, you know, whatever leaks out just dissipates, and the environment just kind of takes care of it, it evaporates or whatever. You know, others can, you know, are much more flammable and can create, you know, a flash. Some of them are more of an environmental problem, which, you know, it sounds to me like this might be, I don't know, I'm sure it's flammable, but I don't know how flammable, you know? And what happens if it leaks? Is it more of an environmental-type problem than a fire hazard? You know, which one is worse? You know, stuff like that. And of course, if you're storing above ground and there's a leak, obviously, you know, it starts flowing versus just being contained in a tank underground, you know? So, and there's a lot of homes around there.
Okay.
Up on the hill and down below, or in the front, I should say, so, and a stream that doesn't run too far away from there, so...
Okay.
Where would this stuff all go if it started leaking?
He has had an SPCC plan prepared, spill prevention, control measures and controls, and part of that shows the volumes, how it's contained. He has a berm around inside, so the product cannot get outside the building. As far as combustibility, it's a Class 3, it's very low combustible. The plastics in a building is more hazardous than this product. So it's very controlled operation, everything's in tanks and pipes, and goes from one tank to another. You know, the stuff comes in, it's basically collected from like McDonald's, you got their, they collect their waste grease, and they have to put it in and shift out the french fries and the other stuff that's in there, there's water in there, they gotta get the water out. So it goes through a process of tanks to get to the end where it's pretty much clean waste oil. And at that point, it gets shipped off to a bio plant that makes the bio product, because that's pretty basic stuff.
Okay, and I think, I think the other thing you're gonna want to be prepared to present is just physically, the trucks, how they're coming in, how they're delivering to you, how it's getting from the truck into your storage unit, and then conversely, how it's getting from your storage unit to be delivered. So that's, I think that's stuff that you're gonna want to be prepared to present, so that we have an understanding of what's going on.
Yeah, we have a professional tank truck, 2,000 gallons. They are really professional. You know, they collect the oil in the different places. We have a lot of customers in this area. In fact, we are the fastest growing in the history of this business, because in three years, we've been able to grow from 50 to 600. There is more room to grow. Basically, it is really simple in reality. We connect, you know, we connect one hose to another that is inside the building. We have the way to contain, and then we transfer from our truck, you know, professional one, to the container inside, and, you know, really simple, and we do the same procedure when we had to deliver the, you know, the product. Really, really, really simple.
There's their own trucks that are coming, collecting the oil and bringing it to their sites. There's no other vendors, so to speak.
Yeah.
And right now, they only have one customer that takes the oil away. So it's very all-controlled, and we can go over that next meeting on how they connect the hose to the tanks and from the tanks to the, out of the building to the truck.
And I don't know if any other Consulars have any questions or issues? Consul Brady?
Unfortunately, I've had a lifetime dealing with phroilitis, so...
We have so much experience.
Yes, yeah. My question is, the matter, the particles, how are you gonna get rid of that? Once it's strained out of the oil, what do you do with the waste product?
We have, we have a shaker, you know, the ways go to a place. Every week, we bring the waste, the water, and, you know, everything, we bring it to a water ham, a water ham. So we bring every, yes, water ham.
Water ham?
Yes.
So you bring it to a licensed disposal?
Yes.
It won't be entering the sources?
Every Friday is religious, you know, we go every Friday there.
It's all contained. The shaker has the stuff on the bottom, they clean out. The next tank collects the water, sits on the bottom of the tank, the products, the products on top, they strain the water off, it's wastewater. It all gets processed and then properly disposed.
Okay. Okay, any other Consulars have anything they want to bring up at this time? All right, so when would the next hearing be again?
December 13th at 6:50.
Is that a good time for you guys?
12:13 at what time?
Yep, 6:50.
6:15.
6:15.
6:50.
5:00, okay.
And Madam Clerk, do you have a copy of those questions that we can give them?
Yes, I'll get them.
Okay. All right, is that gonna be mailed or emailed, or?
I have Elvis's email.
Okay.
Should we ask the public as well if they have?
I'll get to that, yep. Mr. Velez?
Yes, sir.
The Clerk is gonna email you those questions?
Yes.
From the Health Department and the Fire Department, okay?
I just spoke with the Clerk a couple days ago, and, you know, the information that I received from her was that she was able to contact all of the inspector, and they were really pleased with the project that we have. So I was a little shocked, but anyway, yes, I'm gonna be looking forward to receive the question and try to do everything that we can do to be prepared.
Okay, and I appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you so much.
I think the other referrals, I'm sure, were fine, it's just these two that have questions.
Yes.
So, all right, at this point, I'm gonna go to the public. Does any member of the public wish to address the counsel, either in favor of or against this petition?
Usually at the stand.
Dan, we know you, but if you could just...
Okay. Thanks. I own the building that they're in, they've been there since June, they're running a pretty clean operation, they've been going through heck with the Fire Department, they've been on them, they've been doing everything they asked them to do. They paid engineers to do all kinds of surveys and studies and everything in the building, around the building. So he's spent a lot of money so far, and it seems like he's doing everything right. And this guy here, Bob, is like the environmental engineer, sprinkle of fire and oil, that type of thing, so he seems to be doing everything right. I just wanna say I'm in favor of it, that's all.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Does any other member of the audience wish to address the counsel, either in favor of or against this petition?
Steve Alain. Steve Alain, I live at 644 Lancaster Street, and we're right across the street from this establishment. And I was hearing some things. He says he works from 7:00 to 6:30. I hear him pumping sometimes at 10 o'clock at night, at 9:00 at night. My wife doesn't like that, because she thinks we should have quiet time, you know what I'm saying? And my question is, now we're gonna get a bigger tank, is it gonna be more tractor-trailer trucks coming to that establishment? How, they start at 7:00 AM, they start pumping. You guys don't, if anybody lives around that area, that's pumping, pump, 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 pump. You know, I can hear it through my walls, oh, they're over there pumping again. I know, I'm just a little taxpayer, I'm not the guy taking the money, but, you know, it's kind of a hassle. The trucks come in, they back in, there's more traffic right there, on a busy, busy road. The environment, if there's spills, I've had a little bit of oil in my front yard one day. I'm just saying, I live right across the street. Anybody who wants to hear about that establishment, you come 644 Lancaster Street, I hear the noise all the time. If there's nothing I can do, I guess I'm just gonna live with it, but that's all I have to say. I mean, I can, if he wants to answer the question, that's good, so...
Well, at this point, I mean, I think maybe, Mr. Velez, if you want, perhaps you can speak with your neighbor prior to the next meeting and...
We said that he is correct. I spoke with one of my guy, and I found out that there was one time, at least, I remember that they were working until late. So it is correct. And, you know, I spoke with my guy, that's not the time to work there. We work from 7:00, but usually, we start operating at 9:00 AM, but it's something that is, something that I can, you know, fix, because I want to work with the community, I want to work with my neighbor, you know? So, but, yes, there was one time that they operate until late, which I wasn't happy, because I want my neighbor to be comfortable, be able to rest, you know, well.
And is this gonna be a Monday through Friday, or, because you're there Sundays, you're there Saturdays, like I said?
Monday is, Monday to Friday.
Okay.
Monday to Friday.
My concern is, if you're gonna get more, a bigger tank, is it gonna be more traffic?
More time doesn't mean more traffic. It is, you know, more time is just to be able to do the process the right way, because right now, we just do one process, but we need to have more time to be able to do different, different process, because there is a different kind of filter, so that's the reason. And the amount, because I buy container, I deliver container to different places, different restaurants, and I need, you know, those containers, even though I would never use it for oil, I would need to put them as if I would use it, but it doesn't mean that I'm gonna be having there 48,000 gallons, it would never happen. So, but, yes, he is right. I really apologize for that, it would not happen.
Okay, like I said, I'm just concerned that there's gonna be more. He's got one truck now, and he says he's growing as fast as he can.
It was one time, yeah.
So is it gonna be two or three trucks? And so are those two trucks gonna go all day long? In the summer times, I gotta close my windows, I have to close my windows or something, because he's unpumping it. And I get it, it's money for the community, I get it, but what's the, the community around there gonna get? What do we get out of it? More noise, basically, so far. Like I said, I don't mean to come down here, me being a little uptight about it, but, you know, I'm getting all this noise from everywhere, and I can't do nothing about it.
All right, well, those are, those are points that we can take up.
Thank you.
And I think that, you know, I think the petitioner appears to be willing to work with his neighbors. Third time, third and final time, is there any member of the audience that wishes to address the counsel, either in favor of or against this petition? Seeing none, I'll go back to the counsel. Does anyone have anything else to add? Okay, at this point, we're gonna continue the public hearing to December 13th at 6:50 PM.
You wanna vote on that now?
Yeah, why don't we do that?
All right, so the recommendation is further time for the petition and continuing the public hearing to the 13th of December at 6:50 PM, correct?
Correct.
All right. All those in favor of giving 17-22 further time, as well as continuing the public hearing to December 13th at 6:50 PM, please recognize in the usual manner. Anyone opposed by vote of 8 to 0, the petition is given further time and the public hearing is continued.
Okay.
Thank you very much, gentlemen, we'll see you in December.
Thank you very much for your courtesy, appreciate it. So, any questions, they're gonna have follow-up questions. Yeah, I'll bring you guys. Okay, should I continue?
Yes.
Okay, we have another public hearing before the Leominster City Council. Petition 16-22, Council Vice President David Cormier, request to amend Chapter 13, Division 2, Prohibited Parking, Section 13-34, entitled "No Parking on Certain Streets," by deleting in its entirety Crescent Knoll North Side from Lancaster Street, a distance of 50 feet We did have a recommendation from the traffic agent in favor, correct, Mr. Consul Cormier?
Yes, that is correct, I have it here somewhere.
Okay.
I think it's all attached with...
It's all attached with one, but he was definitely in favor. So at this point, as the petitioner, Consul Cormier, you wanna just give us a quick summary?
Yeah, sure, I guess the mayor was approached with this issue, and he sent the neighbor to me. From what the mayor recollected, many years ago, the person who owned the house at the corner had asked for these signs to be put there, and I don't, I don't know for what purpose, but the property has since changed hands, and there are now other neighbors that have told me that there is very limited parking on that little side street right across from the cemetery, and there's really no reason why they shouldn't be able to use that strip to park. Plus, a little further up, there's a fire hydrant, so that prohibits even more parking. And, you know, my, my question was gonna be, is there any kind of a safety issue with allowing people to park there? Otherwise, I would have, you know, voted against my own petition gladly if the police told me that there was a public safety problem with removing this, but that is not the case. So that's, that's basically it.
Okay, and Consul Shalfo Zephyr, any questions or, okay, I have none. Do any other Consulars have any questions or comments on 16-22? Seeing none, I'll go to the public. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to address the counsel, either in favor of or against Petition 16-22?
Can we go together?
Sure. If you could just introduce yourselves.
Hi, my name is Kelly Lamrow.
And my name's Felicia Prevail.
Okay, and if you could just tell us your address, please.
I live at 11 Crescent Knoll.
And I'm actually here on behalf of my parents, they live at 13 Crescent Knolls.
Basically, what we're asking is if the no parking sign can be removed. Basically, there is three houses total, including mine, her parents, and another neighbors of ours on Crescent Knoll. There's two houses in front. One of the houses, I believe it's 335 Lancaster, has a no parking sign in front of or inside of their home. They are using that whenever they want, they do run a daycare out of the house. We have plenty of pictures here showing that they are using the sign. She, in fact, had a death in her family, she was parked there once, the police were called, she got a ticket, she fought the ticket, she ended up getting the ticket dismissed, but it seems like if anybody else parks there, they end up calling the police, but they use the sign daily for their own personal use, whether it's business-related or their family, their visitors. I also would like to add that I do have a disabled son who is known for eloping. The bus driver who drives him has made very, a lot of good points, she's unable to get to and from, he's supposed to be dropped off right in front of my house because of, you know, the case that he can elope. It is a busy street on Lancaster Street, he has been known to run towards the street. The bus driver has been unable to drop him off in front of my residence because of the amount of parking that's going on. If a sign is removed, we strongly feel that it would open up the street more and their way... there wouldn't be, it wouldn't be so condensed, there wouldn't be so much traffic, there wouldn't be so many cars. It's a very, very tiny street, and there's like nowhere to turn around, it's, you end up doing like an 18-point turn just to get out, it's, it's pretty ridiculous. So we feel if that sign is removed and taken down, it would open up so that there would be more parking, there wouldn't be any issue, you know, between the neighbors. We've all gotten along on our end, we've tried to work with them, and they've just been very against anybody parking there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I just want to, I just want to add to, you know, with the fire hydrant that our council, our ward had brought up, was, my parents, it's, it's actually right in front of her house. It was initially supposed to be put somewhere else, but the city decided, for another reason, to put it where there was parking, where my parents were, where they live. They have three cars in that house, and where that parking, where that hydrant is, now it takes away from that parking, so it's, like she said, it's just a nightmare of parking there. And removing that sign would definitely be able to get two or three more cars without having to be so congested in one area. It's a small dead-end street, it's just, it's a nightmare, so, that's all. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Does any other member of the audience wish to address the council, either in favor of or against this petition? Third and final time, does any member of the audience wish to address the council, either in favor of or against 16-22? Seeing none, just two quick subcommittee work, I mean, I would be in favor of this, Counselor Shalfo Zephyr and Counselor Cormier, I assume you are as well?
I am, and also too, I have the, if you want me to read into the record, what Mark, Mark Amico from the Police Department sent us on November 18th. It's very brief.
Yeah, that's fine, it's brief, it's brief.
It's very brief, just, he just wrote, concerning 16-22, the Police Department is not opposed to Council Vice President David Cormier's request to amend Chapter 13, Division 2, prohibiting parking, Section 13-34, entitled "No Parking on Certain Streets," by deleting in its entirety Crescent Knoll North Side from Lancaster Street, a distance of 50 feet west. It appears that this would remove the parking restriction in that area, allowing residents to park on the street. So, you know, that's the most important thing, is, you know, like they said, we can, you know, spread out the parking situation down at the end a little bit more, and have less congestion down at the end. And, like I said, my concern was that we are not creating a public safety hazard, which, you know, I, we are not, based on what we got back from Mark Amico, so I would be in favor of granting this petition.
Counselor Angelini, did you have a question, or?
I just wanted to attest, if I could, that I drove to Crescent Knoll, and this young lady, Ms. Prevell, is absolutely right, there's nowhere to even turn around. She had to back into Route 117 to get out of there, it is a rather dangerous situation, so, what they're saying is absolutely...
Thank you.
...spot on, so, okay, just throwing my two cents, Mr. Chairman.
Sure, that's, that's why we're here. Any, any other counselor have anything to add? Hearing, hearing none, Mr. President, I would close this public hearing, and we can take it up.
Very well, thank you very much.
A regular meeting.
And move on to 13-22.
Yes, Petition 13-22, Ward 2, City Counselor Pauline Cormier, request to amend Chapter 13, Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Article 3, Stopping, Standing, and Parking, Division 1, Generally, Section 13-29, entitled "Handicap Parking Spaces," to include a reserved handicap parking space on a public way at 163 7th Street in the City of Leominster. We did get a referral back from the Leominster Police Department, and I'll just read this quickly. Concerning 13-22 and 14-22, Ward 2, City Counselor Pauline Cormier, request to amend Chapter 13, Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Article 3, Stopping, Standing, and Parking, Division 1, Generally, Section 13-29, entitled "Handicap Parking Spaces," to include a reserved handicap parking space on a public way at 163 7th Street and 110 5th Street in the City of Leominster. The Police Department is in opposition to these two requests for the following reasons: Both locations are public ways in the City of Leominster, handicap parking on public ways in the city has not been allowed thus far. Handicap parking is allowed on private property and public parking spaces throughout the city. If handicap parking is granted on a public way, then every way would request this access. This would be problematic during the snow ban, as there is no parking on public ways during these times. We would suggest that these issues be addressed with a landlord or homeowner that requires individuals to access handicap parking. Perhaps they could designate a handicap parking spot, or on privately-owned property. While the Police Department supports facilitating parking for our handicap motorists, it appears that creating handicap parking on public ways in the City of Leominster would be problematic. Thank you. And that was forwarded to us by Lieutenant Mark Amico. I did, I have a conversation with Ward 2 Counselor Pauline Cormier, but I think at this point, I would just ask her, just to present a quick summary of, of what's happening, and of course, she would like this to go.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, again, as we spoke about it earlier, but just to give, just a quick overview, so I represent Ward 2, and part of that is the French Hill area, which is multifamily homes. The homes, and the two in particular I have been to, they are homes that were originally, one of them was originally a two-family, I believe it was at some point converted to a three, the other one was a single-family home that was eventually converted to a multifamily home. These are older residents who are doing everything they can possibly do to stay in their homes. Their access, because of needing the handicapped access, is more accessible through the front door of the residence. They do have, one of them has a decent-sized parking lot, but again, when they go into their driveway, they're landing, they're parking at the backside of the building, and have to be transported or helped to get down the driveway, across the sidewalk, and then up into the front of the building. The second, the place, the property on 7th Street is an individual who is, actually has moved back to the area, is taking care of his father, who is elderly. They both have handicap placards for parking, his situation is, there's a very, very narrow driveway, there's very limited parking on the street, same thing, they need access through the front of the house, they can't get it from the front of the building. His particular situation is when he has a medevan come to help and to pick up his father and to do transportation, they're actually having to double-park on the street further up, so they are wheeling him out of the house, to the front, up the sideways, into the road, and down the street to get him handicapped access. So that is, that's where these petitions come from. It's a situation where, as I said, my goal is for people to be able to stay in their homes as long as possible, if that's what they want. We know that there's difficulty finding proper housing, it's limited in this area. I understand the Police Department's concern, I don't agree that, one of their issues that they bring up is a, is a snow ban, well, there's no parking on, on any public street during a snow ban, there wouldn't be any exception for a handicap parking spot. In fact, I think these handicap parking spots would only be used during the daytime hours, and it's just to get these people in and out of their buildings when need be. But at this time, without having their support, and, and as we discussed, I think there's maybe another approach we could take to this, it would be my position to ask that, that both these matters be tabled, 13-22 and 14-22, to give me, give us a little bit more time to investigate and see what other alternatives that we might have.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Cormier. First, I'll go to my committee, Counselor Shalfo Zephyr, any, any questions or comments?
No, I, I will support the, the Ward Counselor and the petitioner, but I think we really need to look at this, I mean, there are handicap parking spots in public parking lots, and on private property, so why, I mean, I understand the Police Department's argument, that everybody's going to want one on their street or whatever, I'm not so sure that that's honestly the case, and I think that, in your situation, the situation that you described, these two situations, it seems warranted, in my view. But I will defer, you know, to the Ward 2 Counselor, and, you know, if you want to table them, I'll support them.
Okay, and Counselor David Cormier, third member.
Thank you very much, I, I can certainly support tabling them, but, of course, I, you know, especially as a member of the Disability Commission as well, and, you know, I don't mean to be wearing both hats, but, you know, certainly, we want to promote, you know, any help we can get to people with disabilities, but, you know, I also understand, you know, the concerns of the Police Department as well, and if the counselor, you know, has some different alternatives that might make everyone happy, then I certainly, you know, would rather table them and, you know, see what we can come up with, and if she needs any help, I can certainly assist, you know, and, and whatnot, but I can support tabling them for now, as well.
Okay. Any other city counselor have any comments or questions at this time? Counselor Angelini?
I certainly, I certainly support the distinguished Ward 2 Counselor and her compassion for disabled constituents, and I think this is something that all of us are going to be dealing with at some point, or perhaps even in our own lives, so, I wish you success in trying to find an alternative, and I would be supportive as well, and be willing to help in any way that I could to get, help you achieve that goal.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Angelini, anyone else? Okay, seeing none, I will go to the public. Does any member of the public wish to address the council, either in favor of or against this petition? Second time, does any member of the public wish to address the council, either in favor of or against this petition? Third and final time, does any member of the public wish to address the council, either in favor of or against this petition? Seeing none, we, Mr. President, just some, some guidance, I don't know if, if a petition is tabled, if we close the public hearing or leave it open?
I think you probably want to keep the public hearing open, otherwise, I think that tabling is not going to make a lot of sense, right? I mean, if we close the public hearing, and we table it, we've sort of sent it to Never-Neverland forever.
Okay, is there, do you know, or maybe, do you know if there's a, a provision that if we don't act on something within a certain time, that it, that it's granted?
We could, no, I don't think we have to worry about that, we can table this for study.
Okay.
And what I would ask you to do is read 14-22 and open it for public comment, and then maybe we can vote to table them both for study and block.
Okay, so, why don't I do that now? This is a related petition, exact same petition, but for a different address. Petition 14-22, Ward 2, City Counselor Pauline Cormier, request to amend Chapter 13, Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Article 3, Stopping, Standing, and Parking, Division 1, Generally, Section 13-29, entitled "Handicap Parking Spaces," to include a reserved handicapped parking space on a public way at 110 5th Street in the City of Leominster. At this point, we had the, we've already read the recommendation of the Police, Police Department. Counselor Cormier, did you have anything new to add relative to this one?
Just to clarify, Mr. Chairman, I did speak with both the individuals who reached out to me regarding these, they had planned to come in this evening, and during the public hearing, to be heard on these. After getting the negative response from the Police Department, I contacted them and told them that it was my intention to ask that these matters be tabled until we could do a little more research on it. So they would have been here, but for my conversation with them this afternoon.
Understood.
So I would ask that, that the public hearing be left open, and they be afforded the opportunity to come in and address the council.
And does any counselor, including Legal Affairs, have anything to add at this point? All right, I'll go to the public very quickly. Does any member of the public wish to address the council, relative to 14-22, either in favor of or against the petition? Second time, does any member of the public wish to address the council, either in favor of or against 14-22? Third and final time, does any member of the public wish to address the council, either in favor of or against Petition 14-22? Seeing none, Mr. President, the recommendation at this time of Legal Affairs is to table both 13-22 and 14-22, and to leave the public hearing open at this time.
Very well. So you've heard the recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to table for study?
Yes.
13-22 and 14-22, leaving the public hearing open on both of those petitions? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the recommendation, please recognize in the usual manner, anyone opposed by a vote of eight to zero, 13-22, 14-22 have been tabled for study, with the public hearing reserved or left open. Moving along to 15-22.
Thank you, Mr. President, Petition 15-22, Julio Ramos, Traffic Officer, Leominster Police Department, request to amend Chapter 13, Section 13-33 of the revised ordinance entitled "Schedule of Parking Fines." The rail line is under Group B, $25 fine, please include the offense of obstructing bicycle lane. We do have a referral from the Leominster Police Department, this is from Lieutenant Mark Amico, dated November 18th, 2021. The Police Department is not in opposition to 15-22, which would create an enforcement option concerning the offense of obstructing a bicycle lane. As the City of Leominster is beginning to create marked bicycle lanes of travel on public ways, it is important to keep these ways unobstructed for bicyclists. I would go to my committee first, Counselor Shalfo Zephyr, any questions or comments on Petition 15-22?
No, I think it's a good idea.
Okay, and the third member, Counselor David Cormier, any questions or comments?
Well, I mean, if I was a Ward 5 Counselor, I'd probably have a lot of questions and comments, but not at this time.
Okay. Does any other counselor have any questions or comments relative to Petition 15-22? Counselor Angelini?
Counselor Kynak, Counselor Kynak, let me point it out. He does have a couple of questions.
I think the word is goaded.
First of all, I'm not, certainly not opposed to keeping this bicycle lane open, however, I'm concerned that we have a great number of constituents, residents, who've been parking on the street for years, and I would say that, other than a council, and maybe a couple of police officers, no one's aware that they're not supposed to be parking there, there's no signage. So, before we, my, my request would be that before we pursue this, I try to see if we can come up with a collaborative effort, perhaps with the Police Department, the Mayor's Office, who has the ability to do these robo-calls for snow days and the such, and maybe we could, we could educate the folks, or at least notify them, that at some point in the future, whatever the date that may be, if the council decides to adopt this, that parking will be prohibited from that day on, something to that effect. Otherwise, I think I'm going to be, all of us, at least the at-large counselors and myself, may be fielding up calls from disgruntled folks who walk out to their vehicle in the morning and find a $25 citation on it. So, I'd like to actually do a little more research, too, into the bicycle lane, you know, how, if there was grant money attached to the bicycle lane, if we have any commitment or any leeway in, in how we, how we police this. So with that, my, my request would be respectfully ask for further time on this, to reach out to the Police Department, perhaps the Mayor's Office, and see if we can find a way to at least... and see if we can find a way to at least, at a minimum, make people aware of this prior to adopting this ordinance.
Okay. Is there any other, is there any other counselor that has any questions or comments on petition 15-22? Counselor Shalafou Zephyr?
Thank you. I think I understand the Ward Five Counselor's concerns because I know where people park on and off, you know, West and Merriam. But it's interesting, the Police Department submitted it, the traffic officer submitted the petition. So I think we know where the Police Department, you know, might land on this. But I think I don't have any problem with further time as long as we can figure out a way to notify the public. I mean, we make ordinance changes all the time. And, you know, this might be a more sensitive issue than some of the other things that we've passed. But I think it's a good time to talk about how do we notify people in town about anything, about any changes that are made. I mean, somebody may not care as much. There may not be as many people who care about a smaller ordinance change. However, there might be a small group of people that care about it. You know, my point is that this is a good opportunity to figure out how best to communicate with the public when we do make changes. So I support the Ward Five Counselor's request for further time. And I do want to make sure that we take the opportunity to really figure out how we're going to communicate with the city at large about things that we change. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other counselor? Counselor Arndt?
Unfortunately, this puts us in somewhat of a catch-22 situation where the city solicitor's opinion and the Police Department's opinion basically said that we, you know, can't do this and should be doing this. But at the same, and the bicycle lanes that are being created in the city, for the most part, I think are being created through this Safe Streets grants. I believe I'm correct on that. And that they should be, I don't know if there's any leeway with those grants that we can get that, I don't know how you even do it, to be honest, to add additional space so that you could still could have parking and the bicycle lanes. So I think it's, it's wise that we give it further time to, you know, look into alternatives.
Okay. Any, any other counselor? Counselor Betanzi?
Yeah, I'll just say, this is, you know, kind of a thorny issue. Well-intentioned. But I drove up Merriam Avenue, which I do daily, yesterday with this in mind. And I counted 12 cars parked in the bicycle lane just from Blossom Street to Pasco Ave. And, you know, we're going to take away a lot of people's parking with this. And as we know, parking's at a premium throughout the city. And that's, that's a difficulty. Obviously, support the idea of bicycle transportation. And of course, if there's grant money, we have certain restrictions. So, but I think we need to take a long, hard look at what we're doing here. So I support the further time as well.
Anyone else care to weigh in? Okay, I'll just read the, I'll read the, the letter from the city solicitor dated November 18, 2021. It's addressed to the city clerk. The council has referred petition 15-22 to us for an opinion. The petition would add obstructing bicycle lane to the Group B list of penalties for parking violations, parentheses, $25. In Revised Ordinance, Chapter 13, Section 13-33, Officer Ramos also points out that there is a statute, General Law, Chapter 89, Section 4D, on the same subject. In my opinion, this may be added to Section 13-33 as consistent with state law. General Law's Chapter 89, Section 4D prohibits parking or stopping in a marked bicycle lane with certain exceptions, such as an emergency or under direction of a police officer. Chapter 89, Section 5, then provides whoever violates Section 4D shall, upon complaint made within three months after the commission of the offense, forfeit not more than $50. A violation of Section 4D shall not be considered a conviction of a moving violation of the motor vehicle laws for the purpose of determining a surcharge on a motor vehicle premium pursuant to Section 113B of Chapter 175. By adding obstructing bicycle lanes to Section 13-33, the Police Department could issue citations for the offense instead of seeking a complaint in district court. And by setting the penalty at $25, this is consistent with General Law, Chapter 89, Section 5, which caps a penalty at $50. In my opinion, approving petition 15-22 would be consistent with state law. If there are further questions, please let me know. Brian Riley. I'll, at this point, I'll go to the public very quickly. Does any member of the public wish to address the council either in favor of or against petition 15-22? Second time, does any member of the public wish to address the council either in favor of or against petition 15-22? Third and final time, does any member of the public wish to address the council either in favor of or against petition 15-22? Seeing none, Mr. President, my, my position, I would be in favor of further time. My memory is the, those bike lanes were tied to the rail trail somehow. That's my memory. And, and I could be wrong on that, but I don't know why that, I believe that. But I would, I would be in favor of further time. I'd go to my committee. Counselor Shalafou Zephyr?
I support that.
And Counselor David Cormier?
I do support that. And I just want to point one thing out. I don't think these bike lanes were ever adopted by the city council because I'm looking at Section 13-68.1. And there are two entries in here. North Street South Side from Lunenburg Town Line to 100 feet west of Main Street, and North Street North Side from 100 feet west of Main Street to the Lunenburg Town Line. Those were adopted 5/14 of 18. I don't see anything about Merriam Avenue in there. So when did we adopt that? And, I don't know. I think that's something else we got to look into as well.
Interesting, interesting question. But I'm going to say that the, at least attempt to establish that was a good 15 years ago.
Well, it's never, it's not an ordinance.
Well, may not be.
So I believe that further time is certainly warranted. And we would request that the public hearing be left open.
Okay. So you've heard the recommendation to give 15-22 further time and to establish a continued public hearing on June 13 at, I'm sorry, December 13.
Yeah, we wish.
At 6:20 PM. Any further discussion? All those in favor of establishing a continued public hearing and further time, please recognize usual manner. Anyone opposed? The petitions given further time with a vote of eight to zero. Okay. The public forum. We await the list. The public forum is an opportunity for any member of the audience to speak on a matter specifically listed on the council agenda. Speakers will be asked to come to the microphone and state their formal name and address along with identifying the specific item or items they wish to address. Each speaker is respectfully asked to keep their comments within a two-minute timeframe. The council will not be responding or answering any questions. However, at the discretion of the council president, clarification may be given. We have one person signed up, Natasha Lottin-Stickler.
Hi, good evening, councilors. This is Nastasi Lottin-Stickler. I'm at 114 Blossom Street. You may have already guessed, I'm here about C-63. And we just wanted to, we know it's on the agenda under Old Business this evening. And my colleague Brooke and I just wanted to say we're really eager to learn more about, about the conversation around the Human Rights Commission. I believe the city council has received the petition that came from our community group along with the accompanying materials. And we're really looking forward to continue a conversation with the city council about moving forward with this work. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I just want to state my name, Brooke Gilmore, 54 Green Street. And just showing support for the words Natty shared. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Is there any other member of the public that wishes to address the city council during the public forum? And a second time, is there any member of the public that wishes to address the city council in the public forum? And a third and final time, is there any member of the public that wishes to address the city council in the public forum? Seeing no additional speakers, I will declare the public forum closed and we will resume the meeting. And we are back in session, starting with communications from the mayor and appointments.
Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests the appointment of David Brockelman of 693 Brockelman Road, Lancaster, to the Office of Emergency Management.
The appointment of David Brockelman is referred to Ways and Means. And I, who's the second? I think that's, is that Counselor Dombrowski?
That's me.
Yeah.
Regular course.
Regular course and.
We've set up an interview for December 13, 2021 at 6:48 PM.
Very well, that may be done. Moving on to the proposed appointment of Cynthia Brockelman.
Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests the appointment of Cynthia Brockelman of 693 Brockelman Road, Lancaster, to the Office of Emergency Management.
The appointment of Cynthia Brockelman is referred to the Chairman of Ways and Means.
Thank you, Ms. President. Regular course. And we'd like to schedule a public interview for December 13, 2021 at 6:49 PM.
Very well. The proposed appointment of Cynthia Brockelman, confirmation of, is scheduled for 12/13/2021 with an interview on that date. Moving on with the request to appoint Peter Angelini.
Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests the appointment of Peter Angelini of 783 West Street to the Doyle Field Commission, term to expire April 15, 2024.
Confirmation of the appointment of Peter Angelini is referred to the Chairman of Ways and Means.
Thank you, Ms. President. Regular course. And we ask that we schedule the interview for December 13, 2021 at 6:50 PM.
Very well. The confirmation of the appointment of Peter Angelini is scheduled for December 13 at 6:50 PM. Moving on to C-31.
Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests that the annual tax classification public hearing be scheduled for December 13, 2021. Regarding, this is for the purpose of setting the annual factor used for fiscal year 2022.
C-31 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. First time on the calendar, regular course. And I would ask that we vote to establish a public hearing on December 13, 2021 at 6:30 PM.
Okay. You've heard the recommendation to establish a public hearing on December 13 at 6:30 PM? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of establishing the public hearing, please recognize usual manner. Anyone opposed? The public hearing has been established for December 13 at 6:30 PM, and C-31 has been given regular course. Moving on to C-32.
Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests the amount of $19,600 be transferred from the stabilization account to the library capital account regarding funding necessary library capital expenses.
C-32 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
First time on the calendar, Mr. President. Regular course.
C-32 has been given regular course. Moving on to C-33.
Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests the amount of $50,000 be transferred from the stabilization account to the highway capital account. Regarding the purchase of a generator for the DPW, this generator would be mobile and also provide backup electricity as needed to our pump stations.
C-33 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
First time on the calendar, Mr. President. Regular course.
Very well, C-33 has been given regular course. Moving on to C-34.
Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests the amount of $60,000 be transferred from the stabilization account to the highway capital account to fund the purchase of a new one-ton dump truck for the DPW.
C-34 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Regular course.
Very well, C-34 has been given regular course. Moving on to three, C-35.
Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests the amount of $67,500 be transferred from the stabilization account to the highway capital account to fund the purchase of a new one-ton dump truck for the DPW.
C-35 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Regular course.
Very well, C-35 has been given regular course. Move on to C-36.
Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests the amount of $136,193.80 to be transferred from the stabilization account to the Fire Department Capital Project Fund, funding Phase One of the 911 dispatch relocation request.
C-36 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
First time on the calendar, Mr. President. Regular course.
Very well. C-36 has been given regular course. Moving on to C-37.
Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests the amount of $90,000 be transferred from the stabilization fund to the Fire Department capital account to purchase a generator for the Leominster Fire Department headquarters at 210 Lancaster Street.
C-37 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Regular course.
C-37 has been given regular course. Moving on to C-38.
Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests the transfer of $3,49,949.27 in designated lost revenue from the American Rescue Plan Grant Fund's account to the general fund regarding Phase One lost revenue spending.
C-38 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
First time on the calendar, Mr. President. Regular course.
Very well. C-38 has been given regular course. Moving on to C-39 finally.
Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests the amount of $30,000 be transferred from the stabilization account to the Emergency Management Expense Account regarding the Development of Hazard Mitigation Plan.
C-39 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
First time on the calendar, Mr. President. Regular course.
C-39 has been given regular course. Moving on to petitions, first time on the agenda, starting with 19-22.
Massachusetts Electric Company, doing business as National Grid and Verizon New England Incorporated, requests permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures, along and across the following public way. Low Street. National Grid to install one JO pole on Low Street, beginning at a point approximately 26 feet north of the center line of the intersection of Pleasant Street. Installing new pole number 2-84 to support pole number two and remove the tree guy. Customer wants to remove the tree. Wherefore, it prays that after due notice and hearing, as provided by law, it be granted a location for and permission to erect and maintain poles and wires together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as it may find necessary. Said poles to be erected substantially in accordance with the plan filed herewith, marked Low Street, Leominster, Massachusetts. Also, for permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires in the above or intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings as said, as each of said petitioners may desire for distributing purposes. Your petitioner agrees to reserve space for one crossarm at a suitable point on each of said poles for the fire, police, telephone, and telegraph signal wires belonging to the municipality and used by it exclusively for municipal purposes.
19-22 is referred to the Chairwoman of Public Service.
Thank you, Mr. President. Regular course. And establish a public hearing on December 13 at 6:45 PM.
Counselor Cormier, are you abstaining from the vote on the public hearing?
My employer is involved in this piece of equipment. I do need to abstain. Yes, Mr. President. Thank you.
So your abstention is noted?
Sorry, Mr. President.
That's okay. All right. So you've heard the recommendation to establish a public hearing on 19-22 on December 13 at 6:45 PM? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of establishing the public hearing, please recognize usual manner. By a vote of seven to zero, one abstaining, the public hearing is established. Moving on to matters before the city council, starting with the financial report.
Thank you, Mr. President. We began the fiscal year on July 1, 2021, with $19,904,602.80. We have since accrued $13,592.11 in interest, giving us a new balance of $19,918,194.91, including all of the appropriations that are on there for the first time this evening as well, plus everything else that we've spent so far this fiscal year. We will have a balance, we will have spent $2260,592.92. And if all those appropriations. a balance, we will have spent $2,260,592.92, and if all those appropriations are approved, we will have spent, we will have a remaining balance of $17,657,601.99, and that is the financial report.
Okay, any questions, anyone? All right, thank you very much, Council Cormier. Moving on to finance and C-28, is the chairman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C-28, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, requests an appropriation of $100,000 be made to the purchasing contracted services line, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. This is something that is not customary. We have a situation here where, I will read this, I respectfully request an appropriation of $100,000 made to the purchasing contracted services line, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. This is regarding to demolish two structures that are unsafe located on Burt Street and Lincoln Terrace. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact my office. This was sent to us from the mayor on November 4th. I did get some information today that the building on Lincoln Terrace has been deemed unsafe by the Building Department and the Fire Department. It's been there for quite a few years in the state that it's in after having a fire. It sits, the backside of it is right on the cliff. You can see it from Central Street if you're in the right spot and you look up. So we do not, we do not own that building. That building will come down, and once it's down, we are going to, it's more likely we're going to take it for back taxes. But if the property owner comes forward and pays the taxes, which nobody is anticipating, then we'll just put a lien on the property. But either way, the city will, it does appear is going to acquire the property after it's torn down. But right now, it's just, it's such a safety hazard, the city has to do something because the property owner is in no position financially to do anything with it. And then we do own the building on Burt Street, so that is in the possession of the city. That is another problem building. It does need to come down. So it would be my recommendation that we grant C-28 so that we can take care of these two buildings that are problems in, in a couple of our neighborhoods in the city, and I would ask that you check with members of my committee.
Thank you very much. Council Pauline Cormier?
Can't come a moment too soon. I support it.
And Council Angelini?
I'm in agreement as well.
You heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C-28. Is there any further discussion? Council Schalfo Zephyr?
I have a question through the chair to the Finance Chair. Which structure on Burt Street that the city owns?
I, I can tell you where it is. It's a ranch house that sits way back from the road, and it's on the west side of Burt Street, closest to the hill. It's one down from the corner.
Really?
Right on the corner of Elm.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And Burt, there's a house, and there's one more down. It's a, like a ranch house that sits way back.
And the city owns it?
Yeah, it's been dilapidated for, it's been a problem for a long time.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Never noticed it.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C-28, please recognize the usual manner. Anyone opposed? By a vote of eight to zero, C-28 is granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $100,000 for payment to the purchasing contracted services line, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. This is regarding to demolish two structures that are unsafe located on Burt Street and Lincoln Terrace. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request for the adoption of the order. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of adopting the order, please say yea. Yea. Anyone opposed? By a vote of eight to zero, the order is adopted. Moving on to C-29, is the chairman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C-29, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, requests an appropriation of $250,000 be made to the police overtime account, the same to be transferred from the stabilization fund. This is regarding overtime demands. We did get a letter from Acting Chief Aaron Kennedy, and he does explain, although there's several factors contributing to the unordinary high spikes in overtime demands, we have primarily been experiencing higher than average, larger, longer-term cases for short staffing levels that have caused these types of overtime demands. This coupled with contractual obligations that must be satisfied, has given rise to the request for $250,000 in additional overtime funding. So of course, you know, I, I do believe, we've been, we were told that we've had a few people that have left the department. We all know that you don't replace them overnight, and all of the other things that have went on have caused this demand in, in higher than normal overtime. So it would be my, my recommendation that we grant C-29, and I ask that you check with members of my committee.
Very well. Council Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
And Council Angelini?
I would just, I'd like to add to what the Finance Chair said. I think we had the chief down here probably a month or so ago. It was basically a perfect storm. We had, we had a couple of guys that were called for military service. We had injuries. So we had a couple of people unexpectedly leave the department. So in light of all that, I will be supportive of this.
Very well. You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C-29. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C-29, please recognize the usual manner. C-29 has been granted by a vote of eight to zero. Is the chairman, does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $250,000 for payment to the police overtime account, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. This is regarding overtime demands. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request for the adoption of the order. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of request of adopting the order, please say yea.
Yea.
Anyone opposed? Order is adopted by a vote of eight to zero. Moving on to C-30.
C-30, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, requests an appropriation of $588,235 be made to the Barrett Park Project, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. This is regarding the Barrett Park Project, $400,000 to be reimbursed from the grant over a two-year period, and $188,235 will be covered by the city. Basically, obviously, they are, they are doing a project down at Barrett Park. It's gonna, it's gonna call for a lot of hardscaping, landscaping, site furniture like picnic tables, grills, game tables, a playground, and a volleyball court with playground equipment, natural play area, boulder logs, playground equipment installation, volleyball court, rubber edging, volleyball net, footings, sand. So there's gonna be a lot of renovations that are gonna happen down there, and the city is gonna get a nice, a nice portion of this paid for by a grant. It sounds like some much, much-needed improvements to the, to a park that already is a beautiful place to visit, close to many people's homes that live in the area, who I'm sure appreciate going there. So it would be my recommendation that we grant C-30, and I'll ask that you check with members of my committee.
Council Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
And Council Angelini?
With $400,000 of grant money on the table, I'm in agreement as well.
Very well. You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C-30. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C-30, please recognize the usual manner. Anyone opposed? By a vote of eight to zero, C-30 has been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $588,235 for payment to be made to the Barrett Park Project, same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. This is regarding Barrett Park Project, $400,000 to be reimbursed from the grant over a two-year period, and $188,235 will be covered by the city. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request for the adoption of the order, or is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the order, please say yea.
Yea.
Anyone opposed? By a vote of eight to zero, the order has been adopted. Moving on to legal affairs and petition C-27.
Thank you, Ms. President. Communication 27, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor.
I think that Council Brady wants to be recognized to abstain on this one?
Yes, it involves a landlord on my business property, so I'd like to abstain.
Your extension is noted, Council Brady. You may continue, Council Dombrowski.
Yes. Communication 27, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, requests the acceptance of the easement between the City of Leominster and the North Central Investment Limited Partnership. This would allow pedestrian and vehicular access from Manning Ave. to the grantee property. Last time, I guess they were some legal issues that were getting ironed out. We were asked to continue it to this day. There is a letter from the mayor dated October 21st, 2021. He writes, Dear members of the City Council, I respectfully request the acceptance of the attached easement between the City of Leominster and North Central Investment Limited Partnership. This easement is to allow pedestrian and vehicular access from Manning Avenue to the grantee property. Thank you for your attention. Please feel free to contact my office with any questions. Sincerely, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. This, this is essentially promoting a lot of the businesses downtown. I'm fully in support of it. I'd ask you to poll my committee.
Very well. Council Schalfo Zephyr?
I agree.
And Council Cormier?
I also agree.
Okay, you've heard the unanimous recommendation of legal affairs to grant C-27. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, this should be by roll call, I believe.
I just have a question about this, if I may.
Sure.
Through the chair to the, we were told at the last meeting, we got a communication from the mayor, he wanted to wait on this.
We were told that they were ironing out some, some of the legal issues.
Is that all set now?
I assume so. I mean, the only letter we have is the letter, Grant, asking him to pass it.
Oh, okay. I must have, when did that come?
From October 21st?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm not, you know, I want to, I'm not comfortable passing this tonight. I, I thought there was still, I thought there was still an issue with this.
I don't, no one suggested to me there's an issue.
Well, no one suggested to me that the issue's been cleared up from the last meeting.
All we're doing is giving the mayor authority to sign the easement. So if there's, if there happens to be a legal matter outstanding, then they're not gonna sign the easement. So I don't see the harm to it, frankly.
Yeah, I, my understanding was just, it was some glitches, but I have not heard anything to the contrary.
Well, the last I heard, he asked us to hold off, you know, so.
I haven't, I haven't heard from him. So my, I mean, my, my recommendation stands.
Is it a split recommendation or full recommendation?
Well, I mean, I'm not against it. I just want to know if it's ready to go, you know?
I, I can't imagine the harm. If we, if we authorized him here to sign the document, for some reason, the document isn't ready, isn't gonna get signed. We're not signing an easement tonight. All we're doing is authorizing an easement. It's just so they can access the prop, frankly, this is so they can access the property on the Central Street, the former Enterprise Bank.
Right.
Which has no legal way to get to it. So I, I just want to move this along, frankly, and facilitate the business. Council.
Sorry, just a quick question. There already, already is a driveway there. It's just not a legal driveway?
Apparently.
Oh, okay. All these years. Is that true?
I'm okay with it.
All right. So the unanimous recommendation is to grant C-27. Any further discussion? Okay, this will be by roll call vote. Starting with Council Dombrowski?
Yea.
Council Schalfo Zephyr?
Yea.
Council Angelini?
Yea.
Council Arndinger?
Yea.
Council Pauline Cormier?
Yea.
Council David Cormier?
Yea.
I shall be recorded as yea. The petition is granted by a vote of seven to zero. Moving on to 10-22. Is the chairman ready to report?
I am. Petition 10-22, Revolutionary Clinics II, Inc., seeks a special permit from the Leominster City Council to operate a recreational marijuana establishment use at 130 Pioneer Drive in Leominster in accordance with the zoning ordinance, Chapter 22, Article 18, Marijuana Facilities, Section 22-105. We had a public hearing tonight. The applicant was present, presented their, presented their petition, answered all questions. I would make a finding that the, or recommend a decision that the, the applicant complies with all zoning requirements and that we grant the special permit on the condition that the applicant continue to comply with all requirements of the zoning ordinance and the general ordinances of the City of Leominster.
Okay.
And I ask you to poll my committee in that regard.
Council Schalfo Zephyr is abstained. Council Cormier?
I concur.
Okay, so you hear the unanimous recommendation of legal affairs to grant a special permit in 10-22. Any further discussion? Seeing none, this will be by roll call vote, starting with Council Dombrowski?
Yea.
Council Brady?
Yea.
Council Angelini?
Yea.
Council Arndinger?
Yea.
Council Pauline Cormier?
Yea.
Council David Cormier?
Yea.
I shall be recorded as yea. The petition is granted by a vote of seven to zero with one abstention. Moving on to, I am told that we, Assistant Clerk notes that we should vote 13-22 to table 13-22 and 14-22 in almost open session?
I agree with that.
So maybe we should just ratify those previous votes we took?
Sure. I can take them and block, Mr. President.
Yeah, that's fine.
Petition 13-22, Ward Two City Councilor Pauline Cormier, request to amend Chapter 13, Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Article Three, Stopping, Standing, and Parking, Division One, Generally, Section 13-29, entitled Handicap Parking Spaces, to include a reserved handicap parking space on a public way at 163 Seventh Street in the City of Leominster. Petition 14-22, Ward Two City Councilor Pauline Cormier, request to amend Chapter 13, Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Article Three, Stopping, Standing, and Parking, Division One, Generally, Section 18-29, entitled Handicap Parking Space, to include a reserved handicap parking space on a public way at 110 Fifth Street in the City of Leominster. The recommendation is to table both of these matters for, for study, and we did leave the public hearing open. We voted during the public meeting to do that, and I would just ask that this vote be ratified.
Very well. Heard the recommendation of the Chairman of Legal Affairs to table for study 13-22 and 14-22, leaving the public hearing open. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of tabling for study 13-22 and 14-22, please recognize the usual manner. By a vote of eight to nothing, the, both petitions have been tabled for study. Moving on to 15-22.
Thank you, Mr. President. Petition 15-22, Julio Ramos, Traffic Officer, Leominster Police Department, request to amend Chapter 13, Section 13-33 of the revised ordinance entitled Schedule of Parking Fines. The Rayline under Group B, $25 fine, please include the offense of obstructing bicycle lane. This is a matter where we had a public hearing earlier this evening. There were a lot of questions raised. The recommendation at that time was further time, and we continued the public hearing. So I, my recommendation is further time. I'd ask you to poll my committee.
Very well. Council Schalfo Zephyr?
I agree with further time, but could I ask a question?
Sure.
If we give it further time, could we also refer this to the city's grant administrator to ask if there's any available grant funding that could go to, you know, publicize this or, you know, figure out a better way to do this?
Sure.
Thank you.
That may be done. Council Cormier?
I'll go along with further time as well.
All right. You've heard the unanimous recommendation of further time on 15-22. Any further discussion? Council Dombrowski?
Just along the lines of what Council Schalfo Zephyr said and what Council Angelini said at the public hearing, just with, are there any grant monies tied to the establishment of these bike lanes? We probably should ask that question as well.
I think that should be known. That's a good, that's a good one. Council David Cormier?
Yeah, I just want to ask, unless, unless we didn't, unless we didn't amend Section 13-68-1 since the last amendment to this book, I don't know if they can, I don't know if anybody remembers it. Did we, did we pass these bike lane, is this actually ordinance? An ordinance that these are bike lanes under our ordinances in the City of Leominster? Because if they're not, how can you impose a fine? How can you impose a fine on these bike lanes when the bike lanes aren't an ordinance in the City of Leominster?
That may be a more primary question. That may be a more primary question.
I mean, seriously, unless it happened after, you know, after, when did we last get an update? Maybe two, a year and a half ago? Unless it's happened over the past year and a half, it's not an ordinance. So those bike lanes are not legal bike lanes. You can't find someone for parking in a bike lane that we don't have an ordinance for in the first place. So we might wanna go back to the police department and ask them to revisit all that as well.
I think that's a good idea.
But I think we need some housekeeping done with our ordinances before we pass this.
There's also, I think there's bike lanes in Ward One, so I don't know.
Why don't we get the police department in cooperation with the clerk's office to give us an inventory of all our ordinances that have established bike lanes? Okay? Councilor Angelini?
I was just gonna recognize you and say it's a grand idea, Mr. President.
Yeah, if I may.
So Brady?
I believe these bike lanes are tied in to the monies for the road, so it's coming federally. So I don't know if that supersedes our ordinances or not, but that's what I was under the understanding.
I think you may be right, but we're gonna get a determination on that as well, so. All right, anything else? Okay, seeing no other discussion, all those in favor of giving 15-22 further time with a continued public hearing of December 13 at 6:20 p.m., please recognize the usual manner. Very well, that may be done. Thank you for your input. Moving on to 16-22.
Petition 16-22, Council Vice President David Cormier, requests to amend Chapter 13, Division 2, Prohibited Parking, Section 13-34, entitled No Parking on Certain Streets, by deleting in its entirety Crescent Knoll, North Side, from Lancaster Street, a distance of 50 feet west. We had a public hearing earlier this evening. I believe at that time, the unanimous recommendation of Legal Affairs was established to grant this petition.
That was my understanding as well. Hearing the unanimous recommendation of Legal Affairs to grant 16-22, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, this will be by roll call, starting with Councilor Dombrowski.
Yea.
Councilor Schalfo Zephyr?
Yea.
Councilor Brady?
Yea.
Councilor Angelini?
Yea.
Councilor Arndinger?
Yea.
Councilor Pauline Cormier?
Yea.
Councilor David Cormier?
Yea.
And I shall be recorded as yea. By a vote of eight to zero, 16-22 has been granted. Moving on to 17-22.
Thank you, Mr. President. Petition 17-22, Elvis Velez of Viper Realty Corp., requests a flammable liquids license for 48,000 gallons of cooking oil, Class 3B at 645 Lancaster Street. We had a public hearing earlier this evening. There were many questions from the Board of Health, as well as the Fire Department, that the-- we're gonna get those questions to the petitioner. He's going, hopefully, be able to answer them at the next hearing. And there were referrals from the Fire and Health Department, and I believe the Building Commissioner is still outstanding, so we'll make sure we get those as well. The public hearing has been continued to December 13 at 6:50 p.m. So my recommendation is further time, and I'd ask you to poll my committee.
Very well. Councilor Schalfo Zephyr?
I agree.
And Councilor Cormier?
I also agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of Legal Affairs to grant 17-22 further time. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of further time for 17-22, please recognize the usual manner. Anyone opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, 17-22 has been given further time with a continued public hearing of December 13 at 6:50 p.m. We have no ways and means of public service matters this evening, so we'll move on to new business and the first reading of an ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. President. Petition 75-21, Elizabeth Wood, on behalf of the Planning Board, requests to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to the regulation of dumpster location and screening. My recommendation is to adopt the first reading of the ordinance. I'd ask you to poll my committee.
Very well. Councilor Schalfo Zephyr?
I agree.
And Councilor Cormier?
I also agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to grant the first reading of the ordinance tied to 75-21. Any further discussion? Seeing none, this will be by roll call. Councilor Dombrowski?
Yea.
Councilor Schalfo Zephyr?
Yea.
Councilor Brady?
Yea.
Councilor Angelini?
Yea.
Councilor Arndinger?
Yea.
Councilor Pauline Cormier?
Yea.
Councilor David Cormier?
Yea.
And I shall be recorded as yea. By a vote of eight to zero, the first reading of the ordinance is adopted. Moving on to 12-22.
Thank you, Mr. President. Petition 12-22, City Council President Badanza and Vice President David Cormier, request to revise Chapter 1, Section 1-11, entitled Boards and Precincts. Rayline Reprecincting Updates to Map Ordinance Revision to Become Effective January 1, 2022. My recommendation is to adopt the first reading of the ordinance. I'd ask you to poll my committee.
Very well. Councilor Schalfo Zephyr?
I agree.
And Councilor David Cormier?
I also agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of Legal Affairs to adopt the first reading of that 12-22. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, this will be by roll call, starting with Councilor Dombrowski.
Yea.
Councilor Schalfo Zephyr?
Yea.
Councilor Brady?
Yea.
Councilor Angelini?
Yea.
Councilor Arndinger?
Yea.
Councilor Pauline Cormier?
Yea.
Councilor David Cormier?
Yea.
And I shall be recorded as yea. By a vote of eight to zero, the first reading of 12-22 has been adopted.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I just have a question. I don't mean, maybe, Councilor Brady voted on 75-21. I just wanna make sure that we're all okay here for him to do that, 'cause he wasn't here for those hearings. Does he-- it's a zoning change. I just don't know if he can vote on it or not, that's all.
He did, first of all.
Well, I don't know if we should reconsider the vote.
Second of all, if his vote, for some reason, is invalid, we still have six votes.
No, I understand.
Mr. President, this issue's come up before. He's actually voting not on the merits of the ordinance. We passed that without him. He's voting on the form of the ordinance. Okay. So it's a different-- it's come up a couple times.
I'm not surprised it has. The other issue is, technically, it's not even required, the reading. So it's kind of surplus.
That's why I hesitated just a little bit. I should've stopped.
I think Councilor David Cormier picked up on your hesitation.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's not a big deal. I just wanna make sure that--
No, no, no. It's an interesting point.
That the vote is correctly tallied, that's all.
We're fine. All right, thank you for that. All right, moving on to old business, C-63, and this, I had this put on the agenda because this clerk's office actually received a petition from five interested citizens relative to, well, essentially the same subject matter as C-63, which is actually a tabled petition. So I wanted to explain publicly that we referred it to the city solicitor's office for safety's sake. And two problems with this is that the petition, the city solicitor's office takes a petition that absent an initiative petition or absent a specialized petition like zoning, we have 10 taxpayers, a citizen can't actually petition the city council directly. That's issue number one. Issue number two, it's duplicative of a matter that's already before us. So the recommendation was not to put this on the agenda. However, I put this on the old business just to sort of put it back on the radar screen. I think that last time we talked about this, the Chairman of Legal Affairs was reaching out to the mayor's office about the niceties of a potential ordinance, and I don't know that we've had, we've done anything further with this.
You know, establishing a human rights commission without the underlying ordinance, you just can't do it. So in establishing new ordinance, there were a lot of questions, you know, for the petitioner that I don't believe we've had answers to.
So some of the main points that I remember that were discussed were, you know, just how would the appointments to the commission be made? I think we actually received an opinion from the city solicitor's office about that. And the other issue was, what powers would the commission have? Specifically, would they have the power to investigate complaints or only refer complaints to other agencies? So I don't know if you wanna reach out to the mayor's office, Councilor, and see where we're at with this?
I can do that, certainly.
Okay. I just wanted to, like I said, number one, show the courtesy to the proposed petitioners as to where we stand with their petition, as well as sort of put this back on our radar screen. Councilor Schalfo Zephyr?
Yeah, thank you very much. Did, so you got a response, or you got an opinion from Copman and Page. Could you share that, please? Because I'm confused about, you know, regular citizens can't petition the city council and that kind of stuff. That would be helpful.
They actually gave us an opinion. This came up a while back, and I forget what ordinance, but we can, we have an opinion that's been unfiled for a while that we'll send you.
That would be really helpful. And I guess my question in terms of this, if the Legal Affairs Chair was going back to the mayor who petitioned initially, I guess my question is, you know, how to move this forward? I guess if there's no information forthcoming from the mayor, then, you know, do we just table that or deny it?
Yeah, it's gotta come off the table, which can be done either by the Chairman of Legal Affairs, or three members of the council can actually move, under our rules, can move to untable the petition as well.
Okay, so at our next meeting, assuming that the legal chair's person, chair, you know, gets some information from the mayor, we should be able to see some kind of path forward. I just think, I have people, you know, that have asked me about it because they know that it had been prior, it had been filed previously. So I would just like to see a way forward that we could, you know, move this forward.
Very well.
Thank you.
So noted. Any other discussion on C-63? Okay, Councilor David Cormier?
I just wanna, probably should've said this on the new business. We have a lot of financial items on here tonight that are on here for the first time, so finance subcommittee will be very busy. And I just wanna let everybody know and check with members of my committee. I'm thinking of having a finance subcommittee meeting. I was thinking about next week, but maybe not. What I actually think I wanna do is have a finance subcommittee meeting, maybe 5:45 or 6 o'clock on December 13, which is the night of the next city council meeting. So we'll just kind of keep it separate from that meeting. The mayor wants to do a presentation, I'm told, obviously, about the American Rescue Plan grant funds. It's a lot of money. So we'll have a subcommittee meeting. He'll give a presentation, and then the finance committee will deliberate on all of these communications. We can come up with a recommendation, and then when we get into the meeting, we can just go one after the other. We'll be ready to go. We'll have a recommendation made, and we'll just move right along.
When's our first scheduled public hearing that night? Is it?
6:20.
6:20?
Yeah.
You're gonna get all that done in 20 minutes?
Well, how about 5:45?
How about 5:30?
Yeah.
Even at 5:30 is not realistic.
5:00.
Yeah. How about 5:00? Yeah, exactly.
You think that's too early?
Well, how about 5:15, going once? I mean, you need some time.
Absolutely.
You can always recess if we're done prior to the beginning.
Well, yeah, we'll just have a lot of, you know, time to sit around, but, you know, till we start.
I'll bet you use every minute of it. Councilor Schalfo Zephyr?
Yes, I think that you will use all of that and then some. And I just wanna piggyback on that because C-34 through C-38, they're all capital expenditure requests. So a few meetings ago, maybe two meetings ago, three meetings ago, the mayor had mentioned his capital plan, which I followed up with the city clerk and asked for a copy of that, and I have not gotten one. So I would like to formally request for this meeting, because all of these are capital plan expenditures, that we have a copy of the mayor's capital plan.
Okay, that's noted, and I'm sure the chairman can communicate that to the mayor. So we'll have to establish the time.
I guess I can go ahead and establish it right now, then that way there, you know, I can check with members of my committee. Does December 13 work for Councilor Cormier?
It's fine.
Do you have a preference of time?
5:15.
Okay. 5:15, Councilor Angelini?
If you say so, Councilor Cormier.
All right. Okay. 5:15 is what we're looking at right now, and I'll work with the acting city clerk to get that all established and posted, and we'll do that.
Very well. That takes us, unless we have any other old or new business, that takes us to the community calendar. Anybody have any events for the community calendar? Well, we have a big thing, we have a big football game at Crocker Field at 10 o'clock on Thursday, of course. Hope everybody has a lovely Thanksgiving, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make that--
Councilor Schalfo Zephyr?
Just, this is going back a little bit.
Yeah.
But 17-22, which is the cooking oil flammable petition, could we have the, could we ask the fire chief and the health director to attend that public hearing?
Sure.